Smith, Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Vince Maggio.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day. Thank you for the many blessings that you have poured out on Bojor City and on each and every one of us, Lord. I pray that you be with us in this council meeting today as we conduct the business of the people of Bojor. Be with each and every one of us as we make these important decisions. And Father, be with each and every one of us as we leave out of here today. In your holy name we pray. Amen.
Barmy, say in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Montgomery.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Hammond.
Here.
Mr. Darby.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Free.
Here.
Mr. Maggio.
Here.
All present. Council, in accordance with Louisiana Open Meetings laws and the adopted Bojor City Council Meeting Rules Resolution, the city council asks for order and decorum at our meetings. Please silence your cell phones. Anyone wishing to address the council on any agenda item may approach and state their name and address for the record and shall be permitted three minutes to make their comments on the particular item that's up for discussion with up to four speakers per side. All other audience members are asked to please observe the meeting quietly and if there is a need for audience members to hold a conversation or take a phone call, you are asked to please step out of the meeting. City council-appointed sergeant-at-arms have been instructed to maintain decorum and ask anyone in violation to step out of the meeting in order to maintain orderly conduct of the meeting.
The chair will entertain a motion to approve minutes of November twenty ninth, twenty twenty-two, regular council meeting. Disperse with the reading.
Second.
Thank you, council. Anybody would like to comment? Please cast your vote, council. Chair, entertain a motion to approve the agenda. If there's no additional.
So move second.
There's no additional changes.
Have a motion and second. Any comments? Please cast your vote, council.
Mr. Darby, mind if I ask Phyllis a question? Sure. Phyllis, the last two weeks, my wife says we haven't been on, you know, some, we've been preempted by some other show or something. Do you know anything about that?
Is she watching on, on television, on the suddenly television station? I am not sure, but we can check in on that to see what's going on.
I just texted.
Is, is the streaming working?
We're, we're on now. She's, I just texted to make sure, because she said we come on and then we're gone, but anyway.
We're, we're.
Some people do watch it.
We're at the mercy of.
I know.
Who are we at the mercy of?
Our local cable television that they have to flip a switch over there that we have no control over on our side. They have to flip a switch over there if they choose to give us airtime or not.
Really?
Yes, sir.
So what's the alternative?
Well, we stream online on our, on our YouTube channel. We're streaming online. That's just for those people that watch on the local cable television station. So anyone.
So we do have the alternative in streaming live?
Yes, sir.
Is that on our website, everything?
Yes, sir. The, we have a, we have a.
I learn something new every day. I like it.
Yes, sir.
David, we don't have big streamers, okay?
I know, I'm not. I don't even like this thing, so.
And my, my phone will start blowing up if we're not online, if we're not streaming online. I'll have all these different departments start blowing up my phone. Hey, where's it at? We're not watching it.
Okay, council, under item number eight, ceremonial matters and recognition of guests. Do we have students? Are you here, your students? Thank you for being here. We welcome you to the city council. This is the city council. That's the mayor on that end. That's the city clerk. That's the city attorney. Would you like to stand and give your name and your school?
I think we had two hiding over here.
Oh, got some over here?
Y'all hiding over here?
Won't you guys come up to the mic? We'll make sure that you know the cameras we just talked about.
Say hello to the world, okay? Say your name and what school you had, if you want mine.
I'm Olivia Tinkus and I'm from Airline and I'm a junior.
I'm Jaden Zortman and I go to Airline.
I'm Lena Hamood and I go to Airline.
My name is Kay Rich and I go to Parkway.
I'm Kaylee Rav and I go to Parkway.
I'm Emma Kitchens and I go to Parkway.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for being here. Do you know your council member?
I don't know if they were warned they'd get a test.
Today, you may learn something, but you do have a mayor. If you have any problems, see him. Thank you so much. Hope, hope you enjoy yourselves.
Thanks.
Next item.
Bids. Witness opening of seal bids for bid number P two two zero nine, Citywide Street Rehabilitation Phase One Project.
Good afternoon, council. Mayor Chandler. Today, we do have one bid for the twenty twenty-two Citywide Street Rehabilitation Phase One Project. We do have two bids, I think, today. There was one, I'm sorry, there were two addenda. The first one revised the contract documents. The second one included the sign-in sheet from the mandatory meeting, changes and drawings, a new bid form, and the questions and answers from the meeting. Our first bid is from Benton and Brown. Oh, sorry, the engineer's estimate was a million five hundred thousand for this. This is from Benton and Brown. They did acknowledge both addenda. Their bid bond is included and their bid is one million seven hundred seventy thousand eight hundred and thirty dollars. The second bid is from Ernest Contracting. They did include their bid bond. They did acknowledge the addenda. And their bid is one one million eight hundred five thousand three hundred seven dollars and fifty cents. Sorry, I didn't reread the numbers. Did you got all of those? Okay. I ask that you approve, I'm sorry, take these bids under advisement.
So move second.
We have a motion made by Mr. Montgomery, seconded by Mr. Williams. Any comments? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And I don't have any other bids this year, so I just wanted to wish everyone a Merry Christmas. I won't be before you again this year.
Thank you.
Same to you.
Thank you.
Our next item is new business. Adopted zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC with conditions. Petitioner Eddie Hackelman, Total General Contracting LLC, location ten fifty-four Beverly Street, Bojor City, Louisiana. Request a zoning amendment to change zoning from RLD residential low density to B three for a parking lot expansion for Good Times Billiards.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Hammond, second. Mr. Smith, discussion, council? Anyone would like to comment? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Adopted zoning ordinance, first and final reading, favorable by MPC. Petitioner Irina Haas Grotas. Location two two one one Shed Road, Unit C, Bojor City, Louisiana. Request a zoning amendment to change zoning classification from B one Business Commercial Office to B three General Business for Dog Training Elite.
So move second.
Motion made by Mr. Montgomery, seconded by Mr. Free. Discussion on this item. Anyone would like to speak? Please cast your vote, council.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance allocating sixty-five thousand dollars for construction of a new sanitary sewer force main along Viva Drive and Shed Road to provide sewer service to customers within this area using the Sewer Capital Contingency Fund to cover all project costs. First reading.
So move second.
Motion made by Mr. Montgomery, seconded by Mr. Maggio. Discussion.
Yeah, Mr. President, Ben probably going to be able to answer. Is this going to fix the problem down there for everybody? Is this the same?
Call this phase one.
Okay.
Um, this is a good value of added option. I mean, the, the ideal solution would be to place a gravity sewer main all the way down that road, but you're talking seven plus figures for that. So, much like we have a force main up north of town where we allow commercial customers to tie into that force main and get to Bojor's infrastructure. This will be very similar to that. We're putting in the line and providing a mechanism for these businesses to connect to that main and, and get city service for.
But this will fix the problem with the, those particular new businesses that are coming in?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And I don't know if y'all have been over there, but the energy industry seems to be pretty hot. There's a lot of activity in that general area of town, so. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And the floor is open for comments. Just please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance authorizing Mayor Thomas H. Chandler to execute the attached revised twenty twenty-two Cooperative Endeavor Agreement between the City of Bojor City and the Louisiana Department of Veterans Affairs. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Montgomery, seconded. What's that, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, that's.
Okay. Um, can we get a brief on this one?
Um, it seems this was just an oversight in between the transition of the former administration and current. The agreement never got executed with the former administration and so I've been working with them to get it updated to reflect Mayor Chandler's name so we can get that taken care of.
Very good. Anyone like to answer this? Thank you. Okay, we had a motion and a second on this one. The mic is open for anyone who would like to speak on this item. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance authorizing and approving the engagement of Heard McGalroy Investral LLC to provide professional services to audit the financial statements of the City of Bojor City and Brookshire's Grocery Arena Fund. First reading.
So move second.
Motion made by Mr. Montgomery, seconded by Mr. Hammond and Mr. Free. Any discussion? And anyone would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance appropriating the sum of fifty thousand dollars from the Hotel Motel Taxes Fund for the purpose of repairing street lighting along Interstate Highway twenty. First reading.
So move second.
Motion made by Mr. Montgomery, seconded by Mr. Smith. Discussion, debate.
Yeah, I, I have a question, Mr. President, and that's just me from not knowing. With this being along a state highway, is the state not responsible for taking care of these lights or is it when it comes through a city or?
Anytime it comes through the city, then we're responsible for that. We figured that one out.
Currently, the city has a contract with DOTD to maintain highway signals and street lighting throughout the city. So these lights would be, would fall under that category.
Could we get a contract with them for them to maintain the interstate through the city?
I, I believe that falls under their jurisdiction.
What, along those lines of the signalization, we had talked about that our fees are certainly probably inadequate to cover the cost of what we actually provide. Didn't we talk about this a while back?
Regarding signalization or the street light?
No, I'm talking about the, what we are reimbursed from the state as far as lighting and signalization.
Councilman Montgomery's referencing just our general, the city's agreement with DOTD. They're not, gotta be careful, but.
Oh, we don't have to be careful.
Not generally.
Frankly, we speak frankly as well.
They're, they're not generally favorable to this city. Those are old agreements at the time. I mean, we, we service how many signals?
Eighty-three.
Eighty-three signals and the contract amount that we get, the amount we get from DOTD on that's about a hundred and seventy-some odd thousand dollars a year. And you can do the math. Not much money. We're working with DOTD currently on a communication upgrade to those signals and there's significant costs associated with that and on and on it goes. So it's timely. Councilman Montgomery, we, we have a meeting with the parish to review their agreement and at the same time, because they're bringing on new signals within the parish and wanting to make sure that they get that documented properly. And, and we'll be doing the same with DOTD as it relates to those signals. So we'll be getting with the city attorney once we have some, something put together on it.
So from a financial perspective, you said that this agreement's been in place for a number of years, twenty years?
I can't, better than a decade.
Yeah, ten or fifteen years. And we can certainly, in this day and time, say how much more signals cost to operate, right?
Yes, sir.
How much more labor cost there is, everything associated with the maintenance and service of the lights as well as the signalization.
Yes, sir.
So I, I would like to see something, whether it's a little Excel spreadsheet or, you know what I'm getting at? What we're charging, what it's costing. And that's what we ought to be paid. It's what it's costing us. We don't ask to make money, but we, we're going to maintain them. We want our money for what it's actually costing the city.
Yes, sir. And on the street lighting, it is bizarre, but yes, any lighting on the DOTD routes are the responsibility in general of that entity. So we pay the power bills, we pay to maintain them. Bojor does an excellent job in keeping those up, but the ones along I twenty are complicated to say the least to work on. We have to have a traffic control plan, permits from DOTD and, and on and on. We were anticipating a DOTD overlay project. I believe that project still will get traction and get completed, but it's going to be a while and in the interim, just, it's not a good look for our gateway to be dark when people.
No, I mean, I agree that they need to have lights there so people can see what they're about to hit.
Yes, sir, so.
We definitely need lights.
Uh, and I, it's, it'll, it'll be better. So it, we've been, I think, holding back on this as long as we can stand it and it, it's just time to get it done and, and move on to other things.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions?
Anyone else would like to speak on this item? Please cast your vote, council.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to approve change order number one for the Bojor Arts Council Brick Plating Project with an increase of a hundred and seventeen thousand one hundred and nine dollars and ninety-five cents for a total contract price of six hundred and one thousand one hundred and nine dollars and ninety-five cents. First reading.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Montgomery, seconded by Mr. Smith.
I just said I should have sat in the front row.
Yeah. I'm just, just if you could just let us know what this, what this change order is for.
Yes, sir. So if we, uh, this is using some of the additional funds that was used in, I think it was ordinance seventy-seven to twenty-two. And it's includes changing out a lot of some of the windows along the existing, the two buildings. While the contractor got in doing a lot of the waterproofing measures, they realized that the windows were a source, so we're going to replace, remove the windows, replace windows, caulk it, seal it, repaint it, and try to get that building watertight.
I mean, does this fall, the windows that are going back in, does that affect the historical?
We're just replacing panes, so it shouldn't, shouldn't affect.
Okay, so you've replaced any frames?
No, sir.
That would affect that?
Not to my knowledge and according, uh, the architect's working very diligently to keep that historical status.
Okay.
And we was in a meeting the other day and they brought up rains, it rains inside.
That's right.
Has that been looked at? The, what'd she say, the roof?
Yeah, I think she said the roof above the office.
Huh?
She said the roof above the office.
It's my understanding that the architect's looking at that too. We got, we got some, still some additional funds available that are allocated for this project and we're going to try to address all the water issues.
Is, is that a flat roof on that building?
I, I believe so, but don't hold me to that. I haven't gotten up there and looked at myself.
Little bit of a pitch.
It, it, there's, it's multiple styles of roofs with the two separate buildings.
Okay, it does have a little. All right. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
And the floor is open for comments. Please cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to appropriate one million five hundred thousand dollars from the twenty eighteen LCDA Bond Fund towards additional modified hydro clay at the North Bojor Tennis Center. First reading.
So move second.
Motion made by Mr. Montgomery, seconded by Mr. Maggio.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
We, we're gonna have, I'd like to get together with somebody and have a meeting on this. I mean, again, not everybody was, I guess, knew about this thing, but I've asked the question where it came from, but.
Well, I believe it, I mean.
I mean, it's not, it was not in any plan anywhere. It just seemed like it showed up last week and.
I believe there was two or several hundred people here, um, when there was a question as to far as the contract for Mr. Killen. And at, at that time, there was a lot of discussion regarding expanding the courts. And I believe Mr. Roshnback's been working with Todd. I think Ben can probably bring, well, and Coach as well that.
So the genesis of this, to Councilman Montgomery's point, did center around the perceptive need to expand the number of courts we have out at that facility. Took a look at really, um, envisioning with Mr. Killen on what that would take, how much money that would be. We put together a plan, um, soup to nuts, parking, other infrastructure and things like that. I met with Parks and Rec. We only had a week from the last council meeting to this, so it does seem hurried. Um, that's not our intent, but the intent was to get this measured before the council. I don't want to put a bunch of energy into design and things like that until we feel like we've got a, a comfortable appropriation of funding to pursue that project. So there, there, and, and these gentlemen can speak to the need better than I can, but there's, in my opinion, a need. Otherwise, we wouldn't be recommending this project for y'all's consideration.
What, what is that going to do to that area if you, I don't know how many courts y'all are talking about adding? What is that going to do to parking?
Uh, we have to expand the parking. Parking needs to be expanded now, quite honestly.
Is that part, is that included in this?
Yes, sir. Yeah, six clay courts and the various site work and, and other components that need to be included. We're also looking at adding a spectator, um, location so that you can watch the events and some of the, you know, final round events and things like that out there. So.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Could Coach or?
Yes, sir.
Let me, Ben, yeah, if you don't mind, Ben, is this, well, is this just for, are we expanding for tournaments or are we expanding for, because we don't have enough of people to play on?
Both.
Uh, is it going to be clay courts, concrete courts?
All clay and, and I'll let Todd speak to that, but it, it, you can, why don't you answer that?
So, um, thank, thank.
Mr. Killen, if you would, give your name and address.
I'm sorry. Um, my name is Todd Killen. I live at eighty-three ten New Sensation Court in Shreveport, Louisiana. The need for this for our six clay courts, hydro courts specifically, meaning that the clay courts are sub-irrigated where most of the clay courts that you build are, like your lawn, where the water will be above ground. We're asking for six clay because, one, our demographic is asking for, a lot of our players are fifty-five and over and salt, clay courts are also known as soft courts, so they're easier on your body. So my dad, for example, is in his seventies. He's got arthritis in his knees. He can play on a hard court one day a week, but on a clay court, he can play five or six days a week. So that allows us to corner the market on clay courts where we can host fifty-five and over, sixty-five and over, seventy and over tournaments. We already hosted seventy and over tournament sixty-five, but we're hoping to get more of those. With the addition of these courts, it would make us the second largest facility in Louisiana. And according to the executive director of the LTA, the Louisiana Tennis Association, it would be, it would make us the premier public facility in Louisiana. What it means for a lot of the city of Bojor is when bids go out for state and sectional tournaments, they look at, one, how many courts do you have? What's the quality of the facility? How many sites are being used? So a lot of times when we host state tournaments, we are using our facility and some facilities in Shreveport. If we have more courts, we will, it will increase the odds greatly that we can host alone state tournaments and sectional terms, which means people are staying in our hotels, they're in our restaurants, they're gambling in our casinos. So that's a big benefit. A lot of our programming is limited to seventy-two players because of the amount of courts we have, so we have to cut that off. So a lot of our programs like Tennis Apprentice where we start new players, we can expand that to twenty-four. So we're meeting more of the demands for Bojor citizens for health, activity, um, quality of life. So I think it's an important deal for us. Um, it was one of the things when it was initially built, there was a demand for clay courts and we keep filling it. So, um, people, I would say thirty to forty percent of the time, we have our courts full. And so we're turning down people, you know, I would say half the time at least. So, um, I don't want that to continue and if we can provide a service for it, it would be wonderful.
And David, I, I just say the reason I, I made that. You know, I'd rather see it made, I'm, I'd just rather see it continue, make sure things are going to pass and see it voted down. And I'm not saying it's going to be voted down, I'm just saying, need to think about that.
Well, I, again, there's a reason to introduce things and if you can't get comfortable in two weeks, then I would continue at that point. I don't see a reason to, uh, continue this at this point when, as you well know, time is of the essence when it comes to building and construction. So I would certainly hope after the amount of support that was shown the last time that this came up, would have enough impact on this city council to say that we ought to introduce this. And if it takes longer than two weeks, I'm certainly agreeable to that, to go another two weeks, a month for studies. But I think that the support from the community is certainly by far overwhelmingly in favor of something like this. I was reminding people today in the council in the year and a half of the new council and new people, new mayor's been here. What have we done for recreation? Other than maintain. Sir, you, are you speaking from the audience? Mr. President?
You have the floor.
So. So. We, uh. All I'm saying is that for twenty years, we, and you know this, the council previous that have been on here, we have consistently stayed ahead with recreation. When we took office, what was it, two thousand and one, do y'all remember the state of our recreational facilities? May I remind everybody of Wallbrook Park? It hadn't been touched since I was a kid, playing when I was nine years old. I mean, y'all remember this, in Swan Lake where Little League is, was played, was absolutely horrendous. We, we have made such strides, um, with our recreation, and I think it shows. You know, from Tinsley to the soccer fields to everything, it's just been a commitment that we have to give back to this community. And I mean, tennis is, I think it was very well explained at that last meeting, uh, hits all ages, multiple generations. And, and the exercise it provides, and here's the gentleman telling us that we can be the place in the state of Louisiana to host tournaments. I mean, that's what we're about. That's what we've always been about here in Bossier City, is returning those dividends to the taxpayers. And that's the way I look at it. I mean, the money's been there since two thousand and eighteen for projects in recreation, and, and here lies an opportunity for us to take a million and a half dollars, expand parking, expand the facility, and make it the most attractive place in the state of Louisiana.
Only thing I'm saying, David, is it wasn't on the radar nowhere, you know?
It was on the radar. That's what I beg to differ. We had a huge meeting with several hundred people out here talking us about how much they support.
It wasn't on our, when we bond projects, it wasn't on the capital projects list nowhere. It just.
Well, things happen.
Well, I know they happen, and then.
I mean, like, like this man, uh, Mr. Juno, and, uh, that we just voted on sixty-five thousand dollars in sewer. I don't, that one on a capital project list, things, needs arise, and, and that's what we're about, the way I see it. That, that's why we stay ahead of other municipalities in the state of Louisiana. Because we don't stick to, I love the fact that we have a five-year capital outlay plan. But that doesn't mean that we can't address needs that come such as this.
Sixty-five thousand, to me, is, is not a million and a half dollars, you know? And, and I look at the long term, we're gonna be paying to take care of the courts, you know, down the road. There's, there's just a, a lot of issues.
You don't think it's worth it? That's what you're saying?
Well, I guess, I guess right now, I don't think it's a good time, uh.
Well, what is a good time? We've been waiting a year and a half and we hadn't done anything.
Well, we haven't.
So let's wait another two and a half years, and then we can all, four years down the road, say we hadn't done anything. We've talked about this.
We haven't been waiting a year and a half about this, about adding six courts, I don't think.
This need has been there for over a year and a half. It certainly has. Am I correct?
As long as I've been there, we've needed more courts.
So, I mean, it, it just, it's, to me, it, the, it's either you're for continuing growth and, and, and the quality of life in Bossier, or you're not. You just wanna pull back and stop and let things remain the same. I don't believe that. I have a difference in philosophy. I believe that that's what makes Bossier City different, is the fact that we are able to react upon the needs of the citizens. And I believe that time is here. Like I said, this is an introduction. There's a reason why, um, there was two readings, because it gives you an opportunity to look at this and say, hey, I need more time. Or, you know, go ahead and pass it in another two weeks, or you vote it down. I, I mean, that's the way I look at it.
Well, if, in, in the, in the bond where it's coming from, we also got the, the, uh, Parkway, you know, overpass or roundabouts. We don't know what's gonna happen there, as far as any change orders, how much it's gonna cost, anything like that. So, we've got, we've got projects still coming out of that, that bond fund.
Now, I beg to differ on that, but I'm happy to visit with you.
No, it, it, that's what it says, and I got, I got the.
Yeah, I understand, but we, we know what the costs are gonna be. I mean, so.
Well.
I don't, I don't think you penalize recreation for a road project. You know, we're starting to get back to that old viewpoint of, you know, let's, like I just said, pull back and we can't do these things because we're doing this over here. There's plenty of money in that bond fund. If you recall the reason, the original reason for the twenty, is it twenty million? I think, something like that, twenty or twenty-five million dollar original issue, was for the recreational facility, which the YMCA was gonna run, which never happened. That was the original reason for the money.
We have eleven million left in it.
Yeah.
Anyway.
So.
I, I will vote for it today, carry it forward. Uh, it's just have to think about it the next two weeks.
Anyone else like to speak on this side?
I, I have one more question, and it's probably for Ben. You said this hadn't gone to any design phase yet?
No, sir.
Um, I mean, you, you think this can be done for a million five? Once it goes out for design and everything like that with what?
I do.
I just got it, I just got my, my personal business, and increased cost on, um, concrete going up almost seven dollars a yard.
So, the courts alone, just if you were gonna hire a contractor and come do the courts, and everything was ready to go for that contractor, and there's things that have to happen for the courts to have them ready to go bring things to grade and things like that, you're a little less than nine hundred thousand, just for that. So we know that there's gonna be preparatory work and some design work, um, and, and there are fun things that we can get into. But it, it didn't make sense to start getting in the weeds right now until the council's comfortable in moving the project forward. But yes, to answer your question, I think one and a half million's enough. We were hoping it would be less than that. That's why it's been plussed up a little bit, just to make sure we can include parking and sidewalks and other amenities out there that, that are important to that facility, to making those courts successful.
None of that area, I mean, I, I, I think I know where y'all are wanting to put it. All that area has to be cleared?
Yes, sir.
And none, none of that is in a, um, wetland area?
That's yet to be determined. Um, it's a small, it's less than an acre of property that these courts would go on. So if there is some wetlands there, then, then this would be sufficient. The, the budget here would be sufficient, sufficient to mitigate that.
In order to mediate that?
Yes, sir.
And do everything that the Army Corps of Engineers is gonna require?
Yes, sir.
You know, and, and maybe too, that we can reach out to our parish government and friends, because we have in the past, as Mr. Williams and I, uh, were instrumental in originally this whole concept of this park being put together between the school board, the parish and the city, correct?
Yeah, I know, if you remember parish, the, the parish did the whole part of my part.
Yeah, so.
We haven't done projects like that with the parish lately.
I know, I mean, I'm just saying that this may be an opportunity, right? I think they can go up to a hundred thousand or something like that. So they, you know, they could help us with the preparatory work, which I think you were asking about, and certainly help with the cost there.
And I, I did talk to the parish engineer and one of the, uh, police jurors of that area, and let them know that this project was, was being presented to the council, um, and that if the council moved this thing forward, that we would be, um, looking to partner with them to, um, do other things out there while the, while the iron's hot.
Yeah, I mean, they can actually do asphalt parking lots, too. So, anyway, that, that's good. I'm glad you're on top of that. Great idea.
Mr. President?
I think it would be beneficial for the council if sometime between the next two weeks, we could get maybe a, a daily activity, um, report of how many people are out there playing tennis. Cause I, I've driven by it a few times, uh, since this agenda came out, and, you know, one day it was relatively packed, uh, you know, busy. Yesterday morning, it was maybe six cars in the parking lot, so it varies a lot. So I think if we could have an accurate depiction of what the attendance is out there, it might, might be some, uh, something that could help us make a, a better decision. Because we can't all just drive by twenty-four hours a day to kinda see the activity. To Mr. Montgomery's point, I, I do agree, investing in athletics and parks and recs is, is good for the community. Uh, I'd like to see Bossier have a state-of-the-art basketball facility. Of all the major sports, that's something we don't quite have yet. And I would, I would say, as on the tennis aspect, uh, even if the North Bossier Tennis Center, on a optimal day of playing tennis is busy, we, we do have other courts throughout the city that people could play on. We have courts at Patricia Park and, and Mike Woods Park, and so there are alternatives, uh, to playing tennis, albeit they're concrete courts, not, not clay, and, and so I do understand the, the difference there. And to Mr. Williams' point, I do agree that there are, uh, one point five million is a, it's, it's a big investment for the city to invest. And there are lots of capital projects that we need to do. There's plenty of streets and sidewalks, uh, that need to be repaired, and, uh, you know, we, we're getting ready to have discussions on baseball facilities, uh, as it relates to practice fields. So, you know, there's, there's a lot that we need to do, a lot that we're thinking about doing, that would make me feel more comfortable if this, uh, if this matter was, was delayed and, and we didn't vote on it today, so we could have some time to think about it and do some homework. So, I would agree with Mr. Williams on continuing this.
Mr. Williams just said he was gonna vote for it today.
Vote for it, just, cause we got, we do have two weeks, you know, just, uh, we can get, get out and get my head straight, and, and if somebody else is not on board with it, we just have to, we need to sit down and talk about it, too.
Yeah.
And I don't think, uh, two weeks is a fair assessment of attendance, given it's winter time, rain, cold, weather changing. Certainly you have historical results of the utilization of this place, cause you quoted several percentages when it's maxed out occupied. So I think that would be a much more applicable set of statistics, uh, if you could provide that to the council over the past few years.
Okay.
Okay, uh, I don't, Mr.
Sorry, Mr. President, but if Phil, if you'll set a meeting up, we'll, we'll come. So I know it's difficult with, with y'all, we can't have the three of you, but however you wanna set that up, um, we'll make sure to be there.
Okay. I didn't want Mr. Bohannon to take a trip from his seat to that podium for naught. Uh, would you like to say something?
Yes, sir. I get a lot of requests from the players to add courts. They, uh, wanna go and play like, uh, in the evening, when everybody gets off work, then that's when they come and, uh, do their league play and other things. And they're calling up there trying to reserve a court, none are available. And this is a lifetime sport. Once you play it, you can continue on, you don't have to gather up a whole bunch of people to play. Just one other person, or if you play doubles, you know, you have partners. So this is an opportunity for us to reach the youth, and like Todd said, they play all the way up through the different ages. And our, uh, guys and ladies, uh, from our center will represent the city of Bossier. Bossier's well-known in the tennis community. How many regions do they go to about every year?
We just got back from, um, Mobile, Alabama, held a sectionals, and three of our teams, um, I know y'all aren't gonna stand the ratings, but are two-five, uh, five-five, and eight-five teams, one representing, uh, Louisiana against the South, so.
So, uh, they carry the torch for Bossier City all over the South, is what I'm saying, and people come here from all over to come play. And, uh, he has one of the few facilities that uses the underground irrigation, the hydro courts that, uh, we're talking about. The others, like he said, are watered from the top. You water them, you have to stay off of them, then you come back and play on them. These, he keeps it maintained. He does all the maintenance on the courts. City does not maintain courts. He does that with his crew and so forth. So, uh, to me, adding this, we don't have to ship when we do the Katie, uh, home build, you know, Katie build homes. We're at the gross size of having to ship some of that tournament to Shreveport. We don't have enough courts. That shouldn't happen. We should keep everything here, and this is, uh, what we're looking to do.
Mr. Mayor, do you support the one point five?
I believe that, uh, we need to, six extra courts, yes, sir, I do. And, uh, I believe that, that it'll benefit Bossier City by having it, because I hate to have us to look for other courts when we need some courts. And, uh, I think that it will do, it'll, it'll bring business and people, and a lot of tournaments, some out-of-town people will come to.
Sure. You, you think you might wanna give a directive to your Parks and Recreation to look at those other courts throughout the city? So we can get those up and moving?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I think that would be wise, if you, if you do that. I, I wanted to ask on the, um, on the corner marketing part you said, Mr. Killen, give me a projection of, of the percentage you think we would corner.
So, a lot of, from a standpoint of facilities in the state, most of them are private facilities that have clay courts. So, when they're hosting tournaments, um, I would say for us to host, there's a tournament called the Senior Cup. Senior Cup, and then they're saying fifty and over. Um, and all those matches are on clay. So that's one of the, my main targets of trying to get a bid out for, um, a tournament from the section, is to get one of those tournaments that are, um, specifically on clay only. And so most of the facilities have maybe six clay courts, eight clay courts, ten clay courts, something like that. But to host a tournament of that size, we need more clay courts to host that many. And hopefully with that, I'd say whoever's in charge of the bidding, when they release those bids, they're awarding those to facilities with larger ones, larger facilities with clay courts specifically. There are times whenever we have those, um, we have our facility, all twelve clay courts are being used, but the hard courts are not. It's not uncommon for people to reach out and say, hey, um, we've got two hard courts, all of our clay courts are full. And they'll go, no, that's okay, I'll wait till tomorrow or another day, because they would rather wait another day, because they would be in pain on a hard court. But, uh, to answer your question, I mean, I'm hoping to get as many clay court tournaments as possible. All of the ones that are of the older demographic, preferably the sixty-five and seventy and over. Hopefully we get not just state tournaments, but sectionals as well. So, um, that's my goal, is to get as many as we can.
Sure. So, your answer to cornering that market, what, what percentage are we talking about? Give me a projection.
Uh, so let's say if there are twelve tournaments, um, that, I mean, I'd love to get half of those.
Okay, so fifty percent of the market, not, not so much as?
Well, a lot of those, if, if there are twelve clay courts specifically in the section, um, sometimes there are other facilities in the section that can get those. But as far as the state goes, I don't see why we can't get all of them. We got the seventies and overs and the sixty-five and over this year. So I'm trying to get some other tournaments that maybe are a little bit younger, maybe forty and fifty-five and over. Maybe, I don't know, hopefully we have, right now we have three out of the five or six. Hopefully we get one or two more of those. But I want more than state tournaments. I want sectional tournaments, I want national tournaments. We can't corner the market on a national scale, because they're much larger facilities. Where I had this happen, we were in Orlando, and they have thirty clay courts and thirty hard courts and indoor courts. So we can't compete with those, but we are in a central part of the nation, so that helps us from a national standpoint of getting bids. So if we have clay courts, more clay courts, then we're more attractive to those. And so I haven't reached out to the national facilities or national, um, USTA, because I don't know, I didn't think we had enough courts to attract those. But now, well, if we had six more, I would reach out more to sectional and national events.
Okay.
Mr. Killen, is, um, high school, is state tournament held here?
We, the only, uh, we have a regional, so it's happening this year for, for Providence. A lot of that is based on how the school does, and so they have to be on hard courts. So we have six hard courts for the, if we were to host, uh, head-to-head matches, or state matches. And it would be helpful to have more of those, but, um, most of that is, is in the spring, when we're using all of those. But we're using the clay all year round. The demand for that is high all year round in the spring. If y'all come in March, from probably two o'clock to seven. If y'all come in March, from probably 2 o'clock to 7 o'clock, you're probably not even going to find a parking spot. You go out right now at 1 o'clock, you're going to find a lot of open spaces. So, the clay courts is helpful just from a year-round standpoint. We can put juniors on there, but the high school matches need to be played on hard courts.
Do you go into these, are you gonna go out and do, try to get tournaments, or you, do you use the Super Bowl Bossier Sports Commission?
So, we usually use, myself and the CTA, the Community Tennis Association, we, we go in partnership with them as far as going out and getting, putting together bids, but we do use the Streetport Bossier Sports Commission to help, they help sponsor our tournaments, for sure.
No reason to ask that, because I know they like to, that's why it's called Streetport Bossier, you know, they try to use your courts and Streetport courts when the tournament comes in, you know?
Yeah, they're interested in bringing people from out of town, so if they're here in Bossier, that's great for them. Absolutely, they help us get hotels and track players, for sure.
This, Russell Bach, you did a great job in getting that other entity to be involved. How confident are you in getting them to fully commit to this project? By the next time, we have to vote.
Police jury?
Mm-hmm.
My intent wasn't to get them to commit to this project. My intent was to tell them Bossier has an item on the agenda, and if the, if it gets approved, then we would be looking to partner with the police jury to, to cooperate and expand on that and move that forward. I believe that whole facility out there, you know, you got the properties, parish, or police jury property, city, and, and school board.
Houston.
Yeah, so it, it seemed to make sense. The city has partnered with the police jury often on their projects to provide some support, to, to add some value to those projects, and that was my intent here.
Okay.
Not to go ask them for half or some percentage of it, but to say, look, we're going to be doing this potentially, and if, if we do, we'd like to give the police jury an opportunity to support that and, you know, make it better.
Okay. So, the Parks and Recreation, are you planning futuristically some other projects on that property, so then the parish can partner? Is that already in the works? Are you discussing that?
Uh, no, sir.
You're not? Okay. Okay.
We use that property for our practice for soccer, football teams, the big field at North Bossier. This will not impact that at all.
Mm-hmm.
And back to the deal about the public tennis, we do have public tennis courts all around town. Mike Wood, probably the only one in the area that has wind screens around it for people to play tennis.
Mm-hmm.
And the Patricia Park has got the new pickleball phase, that's laid out on it. Metaview has got the pickleball courts laid out on it, and then we also got the courts down by Bossier High School, Fort Smith, and we do maintain those. We do have people come in and reservice them. We do have people come in and put the lines down, and we maintain those where they're in the best possible shape you can have to play on, sir.
Okay, so they, they are up to par?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I think we need some lights, though.
Yeah, we need lights at?
Mike Woods.
Mike Woods, for sure, and I think Patricia as well, the lights, lights are out.
Were you aware of that?
Uh, parks are closed at night, so.
Okay. Okay.
Gates are locked, I mean.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Killian, for being here under those conditions. I hope we get better and recover. Thank you all.
I'd like to say, David, I mean, maybe we can meet with juries if they want to participate, maybe for the parking lot, you know?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. I mean, it, it worked in the past, so I believe it'll work in the future.
Okay. The mic is still hot for someone else who would like to speak. Give you two minutes to address.
Three minutes.
Three minutes to address this issue that's before us, that's on this item. Item number?
I got it, Mr. Darby, I read it. David Crockett, 653 Domain Drive, Bossier City. I love tennis, I've played at your facilities, they're definitely best in class, I've played in South Freeport, I've played in Lafayette, it's a great facility. The real question is, this is a guns versus butter decision, how you want to spend 1.5 million dollars with bond money that you're going to pay for in the out years. You know, I just saw that you are approving, are working on about 1.8 million for roads, and you're going to spend 1.5 million on tennis courts. You know, I think a lot of Bossier City would like to see money spent on roads. I think the other thing that was talked about today is the last meeting that you had where you talked about this subject, a lot has changed in the country over these last several months, rising interest rates, Fed just started quantitative tightening. Money's going to be hard to come by. We've got violent crime now starting to show up more in Bossier City, so we, you know, you may want to discuss, you know, whether you need to improve the amount of security force that you have inside the city. So, a lot of things have changed since the last meeting, and now we have Biden's war on oil, which is directly attacking the economy that we have in this city. Look at the Bossier School budget, and you can see where they attribute how much money of this economy is from the, from the oil industry. Those are all things that are questionable. We don't know how we're going to be affected by a possible recession that's coming up. So, I think a lot has changed, and I think you have to think about, you know, if, if, you know, we, we had a situation in 2008 where we had to address the fact that we had budget shortfalls, and what did we do? We reduced the security police, or not security police, but the police that we have in the city. So, I think there's a lot more to consider. I do, you know, hope that we think about how we can serve the underserved, how are we going to address crime in the city instead of paying for something that goes towards really an upper-middle-class sport. I love it, you know, paying for these things, I'll get a benefit from it, but what are we doing with basketball courts, outdoor basketball courts? How are the, how can the money, that same 1.5, this is a guns versus butter decision, and I think this is one of the best discussions that I've, I've heard from the city council, and I appreciate you guys for talking about it.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else would like to comment on this item? Number eight. Okay. We had a motion made by Mr. Montgomery, Second Mr. Maggio, and we had a discussion almost about continuation, but that's not, hasn't been made, okay. So, we're going to go with the vote that's on the table here. Please, cast your vote.
Introduce an ordinance declaring approximately 60 expired bulletproof vests surplus to the needs of the Bossier City Fire Department, and donating same to the Simple Church for donation to Juarez, Mexico Fire Department, first reading.
Second.
Counsel, this is an ongoing thing, I know the fire department donates vests and all kind of gear, bunker clothes, whatever, when they're outdated, expired, we can't, we can't use them, we can't give them to the fire departments in the, in the states. So, Simple Church goes down and donates them to, to Mexico. Chief Sagon has 60, I believe, vests that we want to donate, and they'll be leaving very, very shortly, so that's, that's. Chief, anything else you'd like to say? I think that's about it, ain't it? Thank you.
All right. So, motion made by Mr. Freeze, Second, and Mr. Montgomery, and then the explanation given by Mr. Williams here. Anyone would like to speak on this item?
Have we already purchased 60 new ones to replace these?
Thank you for coming, chief.
We had them.
We got to the mic, anyway. We have new vests, been on probably four or five years now. These have been sitting in the warehouse, probably at least five years. So, they were actually plate carriers, and now we have the full vest with side armor and everything else, so.
Okay. Thank you, chief. Anyone else would like to comment? Please, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance allocating $265,000 for repairs and upgrades to the North Side Pump Station using the Sewer Capital and Continency Fund to cover all project costs.
Second. Motion by Mr. Montgomery, Second, Mr. Hammond, discussion, debate. Floor is open for comments. Please, cast your vote.
Motion carries. Introduce an ordinance to contract with Man Shack Consulting Group to provide assistance in obtaining state and federal grant opportunities as it relates to the infrastructure needs of the city of Bossier City, this first reading.
Second. Motion, Mr. Freeze, Second, it was Mrs. Maggio and Mr. Williams. Can we get a brief on this one? Maybe the scope of what you're going to, to go after?
Good afternoon, counsel. Like y'all, to introduce y'all to Stephanie Phillips, she is a new hire to Man Shack Consulting Group, comes to our firm with a great deal of infrastructure experience. We have been working on behalf of the city within the City Engineering Department and Public Utilities recently, we're able to get recommended for 5 million, but there is a lot of federal dollars available, and we believe that we can be of assistance to the city in pursuing those aggressively, not when, you know, we're not out doing other public works activities. We, we would like to dedicate some resources to doing that. So, that, this is a, a grant that allows the city to utilize our resources, this would be me or Clinton, these would be other Man Shack employees working on behalf of the city of Bossier, working with the administration. Stephanie's been here, we've met with the mayor and his team regarding this idea, and wanted to present that to the council, and, and we, we, we hope you all will agree to that, and we'd like to get to work on it. It's not going to have any detriment to the projects we are currently working on with the administration, and for some of the council, it's going to help us put a lot of gasoline on them.
Where, where have y'all, or where have you written grants for Baton Rouge? What's the success rate of those grants?
Yes, sir. I, I actually don't like to talk about my success rate, because I don't want to knock on wood, but I, I've been very successful in several grant opportunities, including the city of Lafayette, city of Monroe, Baton Rouge, Airline Highway, I was recently working on the Move BR program, and we were able to receive about $172 million for airline and Florida Boulevard. So, both in the transit area, safety improvements, I mean, just a broad range of infrastructure across the state of Louisiana, also in other states as well.
So, we're a lot better than them, so you should be able to get us about 200 million?
Absolutely. 100%.
Welcome, Ms. Phillips, to Bossier City. Thank you for being here. Your fee, is it inside the grant that you get?
So, maybe, and I know you asked her, but in, in the ordinance, you'll see our rate structure, and so our intent is to, to bill you based on our billable rate. So, like I'm a senior project manager, you can see on there what my billable rate is, and so her fee would be based similarly on that, but if we have CAD work to develop maps or legwork, we don't want you paying, you know, at the top of the rate structure for that. So, our opinion, we were able to give you a lot of value for, for, for the work, it's not grant-based, you know, you're not paying us a big bunch of money to go pursue a grant, and we just put it in and say, pay us, you know, and we'll hope for the best. This is really just a way to bring some resources to Bossier City in a time where, you know, this money's not going to be here forever. So, that was our experiment, if you will, in, in trying to do this in a way that's transparent to the city, you'll be able to see who's worked on it, how long, and what those, those hours were, and what we've done, much like we do the majority of our projects.
What if, hypothetically speaking, what, what if you were to pursue grants, and you would bill in your fee based on the success of that grant, and you get a percentage of that? How would that look to the city? Would that be advantageous to us in any way?
Maybe, but that's not how this is structured. So, we, we, we have not structured this in a way that we get a percentage of, of any grant that may come into the, to the city. That's not our objective here. It's not, it's not our objective to go and, and make ourselves, you know, fatter because of it, it's just there, there's, there is an opportunity for the city, there's opportunity. Bossier City's not the only community that's.
Sure.
Sitting here trying to figure this out. So, you know, when, when Stephanie came aboard, we felt strongly that it was, it was something that we could bring to the city, a valued client of ours, and, and it's really, that's it. If we get a grant, you know, then, then that'll enrich the, the local contracting community and design community and, and.
Sure. But if you don't get a grant, the city has paid your fees, and you were not successful, although I'm, I'm going to think that you're going to be very successful. That, that's the other side of that, so that's the only reason I brought that up.
Sure.
But thank you so much for being here. Thank you, Ben. Ben, anyone else?
I know you will, because you always do. Keep a surprise, maybe, of what grants she's working on, where we're at in the.
We will, absolutely, and you know, we meet, we try to meet regularly once a month, and we can come to the council meeting, and at least quarterly, give you an update on how that's, that's going. We're excited about it, it's, you know, nothing ventured, nothing gained, and, and I would just like to see us put forth a real professional effort, and, you know, Bossier City has invested tons of money into the infrastructure, we want to leverage that.
Well, like I said, at the meeting with the mayor the other day, it's like free money is good money, huh?
It's always good.
Nothing that's real free.
Ben, you were talking about the $5 million, the, that was on the, that was on the water.
It's called the Water Sector Program.
Yeah, I mean, can we go back now and reapply for that?
Um, no. Short answer is no. So, we don't know, we haven't got formal approval on the 5 million, but, but once we are in the till on that Water Sector Program, each water permittee, so we have a state number for our water system, you're allowed one of those, those grants. So, in looking at some of the inside baseball on that, we did very well, the city did very well on getting that. I know there's some politics at play, but we were way up on the list of, of projects. So, it's a great project, it's for South Bossier. Matter of fact, one of the grants that, that we're working on right now is pedestrian, expanding the pedestrian improvements down in South Bossier, there's, there seems to be a big push by the federal government for those alternative transportation projects, so.
Because that, that's one of the things hindering our turn lane at Golden Meadows and 71, correct?
Pedestrian activity is, say hinder, just slows, yeah, it slows things down.
Slows things down.
So, all good, but it, it, you know, it just takes energy to get into that, that game, and really using her resources and references and contacts and things like that. I mean, anybody can write an application on paper and send it in, and we can all hope, but hope's never a real good course of action.
Well, maybe with Ms. Buchanan in here now, she's got some phone numbers you don't have.
She does, absolutely.
Mr. President, if I may, real quick, the ordinance says that money's available in the engineering budget, not requesting additional money at this time. Do you feel comfortable for the, the whole year that you're not going to need the $60,000 in your department's budget?
That's, I, I don't know. My hope would be that, that we can stretch that a long time, and those are things that we'll be regrouping with the, the council often on. Those invoices would, would come to the administration, they've got to review that, and at such a point in time, as you see that there's no value in us pursuing that, then we could stop. But there are, there are funds for professional services available within the engineering department, those are the funds we are suggesting be used for this, this effort, and it doesn't require, you know, a budget amendment or things like that, but we, we will, we will pursue those with responsibility and, and transparency, and with our intent to bring money to Bossier that, that's out there.
And I was looking through the contract, and maybe I missed it, but is this contract going to run concurrently with the current 3P or the engineering contractor, or is this on its own?
It's just a not to exceed, so there's a not to exceed $60,000 in there, and, and that's, it doesn't have a termination clause in there, it's just a separate standalone agreement to. agreement, to answer your question, that has a not to exceed amount.
But, but when does it, when does the contract end or we need to renew it?
We would renew it if we run out of money and, and the council sees value in renewing that.
Okay. Thank you.
No more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, we, we ask if anyone would like to speak on this item. Please catch your vote, counsel.
Motion carries.
Any reports?
No, sir.
Announcements? Mr. Mayor, would you like to close in comments?
I don't, I think we had a real good council meeting today. We got to do, we talked over about everything and kind of stretched everything out pretty heavy. But I just want to thank everybody for being here. And I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas. I don't think we're gonna have another council meeting before Christmas.
We have another.
We have one. Oh, excuse me. Back that out. I'll, I'll do that then. But no, thank y'all. Y'all have a nice day.
Be in charge.